Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we do every meeting, we'll begin with public audience. Per the rules that we adopted by this board in December 2013, people are welcome to speak for five minutes. If anyone would like a warning at four and a half minutes, just let me know in advance, and I'm happy to let you know that, so you can wrap up in the last 30 seconds. Otherwise, I'll let you know at five minutes. So with that, we'll begin with public audience. Anyone to speak? We'll go from this side to this side. Mr. Kalishman.
Robert Kalishman. Thank you for allowing me to address the board. There's a couple of things that have come to my attention. First was at the public hearing for the senior center a week or so ago, and I noticed that were people that were serving on various committees, in particular, the golf committee or an association with the golf committee at the farms of the golf course. And they had testified that they were in favor of a certain project. And I feel it's important, when people get up that are ringers, they should announce that they're ringers, and the conflict should be announced. And if the conflict is not announced, and people don't fess up to it, I think the chairman should make a note that these people are connected or have a dog in a fight, so to speak. Now, the next thing is the police budget. Here again, you're taking the police budget, and they're misleading you. They're telling you, or they're going to tell you, that they're going to add two policemen. That's erroneous. They're losing two policemen, and the two that they're adding are just replacements. We need two additional policemen. The reason we need them to be redundant is the murder on Iron Horse Boulevard. You need to beef up that detective division. And here again, we're still waiting for the people to look into the marijuana factory that we have here, courtesy of Dinah Noble and a few others. And incidentally, one of the players is a convicted felon, and you still haven't looked into that. And it's my opinion that the reason we're having all these difficulties in town is because of that marijuana factory. If you go down the shooting on Wilcott, you just go down the list, and you can all relate it right over here. Now, the other thing I'd like to report to you, I filed a complaint back in, oh, I'd say, September, August regarding the running for state representative. And I just want to report to you on the investigation, how thorough the investigators were. The state investigator has Ms. Cortez as the Democrat, as the Republican registrar, and she has Ms. DeCascenzo, or she has her as the Democratic registrar. And this is filled out in the complaint. And they've got, and these are the players, just imagine what the results would be if they had done a thorough search. They didn't even know who the players were. And that's what's going on in our fair state. And if you notice, we're having a little more publicity with the election enforcement division. People more or less going outside their court. Now, getting back to the police budget. I think you have to come in with a very substantial police budget and stop cutting corners. You need to add additional policemen. You need to add additional monies. And as I'm sitting here, I'm looking at Mr. Asprey. And the thing that I'm bringing in mind, we're going to give, we're going to put away, I think it is, correct me if I'm wrong, $42,000. We're going to start putting it away so we can take care of Jerry Toner and the golf crowd out at Old Farms. That's number one. Number two, we're coming in, we're going to put in $8 million into a facility for a senior center. They don't even know where the senior center's going to be located. But you're going to, you're going to put it in, and the rumor that I'm receiving is the fact that people are saying, well, if we don't spend the $8 million on the senior center, we'll spend it on something else. But you're going to put that money, and you're going to tax the people accordingly on $8 million for a senior center.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman. Thank you. Appreciate your comments and your input. Going from this way to this way, Ms. Coe.
Jill Coe, 26th and Drive. As a candidate for first electman, I've been reviewing the budget process. When first electman Lisa Heven had a marathon budget review on Saturday, March 7, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., all employees were requested to attend the meeting when they shouldn't be home with their families. This board has provided public money for nonprofit organizations in order to get elected. We are being asked to determine the salary of the first electman, and the issue is what are the responsibilities of the first electman as described in the charter. At present time, the charter is inconclusive. If this board cannot determine the salary of the first electman, why should the taxpayers tell you how to interpret the charter? Since the uproar of the Glassman salary, this board has become impotent and will not take their budgetary responsibility since you are afraid of pushback. The Board of Selectmen provides a budget, and the taxpayers vote for the recommendations, not vice versa. Money should be appropriated for Charter Revision Commission to give the taxpayers a charter with the town manager, as I would do with first electman for a vote and not a salary for undetermined responsibilities. A town manager would have a contractual agreement that is determined at the time of employment where is the leadership. We have discussed the senior center for years without consensus. The recommendation should be determined by this board, not the Public Building Committee or political patronage for Dave Ryan from the performing arts private organization. As first electman, I would recommend Eno Hall for the senior center with renovations. Eno Hall is a town treasure and should not be abandoned for political payoff. There is no need to take a survey for a senior center for $10,000, since there is no consensus from the public on the location, and the survey will not determine anything. We need leadership from our elected officials. Every decision has, some people upset, is seen with the Mary Glassman salary issue. This board should not consider their reelection when making difficult decisions. Most people want to continue using Eno Hall as a senior center. The town can provide an electronic trolley or a loop throughout the center to provide a shuttle from Iron Horse Boulevard bus stop to all the businesses in Eno Hall Senior Center. We could provide a park and ride for the center of town, with businesses sharing the cost. Since we don't have a place with a senior center or plan with the cost, the project, this project should be deferred as a capital project. There should not be a placeholder of $8 million for a senior center that should remain at Eno Hall with minimal cost. Why should the taxpayers allow our elected officials to provide a slush fund of $8 million for first electman Lisa Heven? This is a professional, isn't a professional management of our tax dollars. It appears that once again, Simsbury Library has leaks from the roof compromising some of the inventory, carpets, and walls. What are the costs associated with continual patching of what appears to be structural issues with the roof? The agenda reflects the approval of gathering permits for the concerts that the performing arts business is entertaining. A non-BYO concert have brought to town many people that tailgate at the parking areas on Iron Horse Boulevard. It appears that there is excessive alcohol consumption prior to the concerts, causing inappropriate behavior. It is alleged many concert attendees are smoking pot and cigarettes, where there is a signage at the field that does not allow smoking. Many of the businesses are losing business on these nights, since parking is not restricted to restaurant patrons. The vendors providing meals are not generating enough revenue, since food is consumed when tailgating. How can anyone control excessive drinking when the patrons come drunk to the concerts? This is an accident waiting to happen. The town liability is enormous. When I am elected first electman, I will eliminate the tailgating on town property. Will this board do the same? Is slightly stupid concert on July 8 an appropriate venue? During the concert, the music is amplified excessively, where residents are being disturbed with excessive noise. Can the private performing arts business control the decimal level of the concert? Do the town residents can have expectation of quiet environment? The private performing arts business has a contract with the town to provide an audit report of their revenues and expenditures for the concert. To date, they have not supplied this information. I would recommend that this board not approve their gathering permits until they comply with their contractual obligations to the town. Recently, first electman Lisa Heven has asked the Ethics Commission for an option on her conflict with the Hartford, since her husband is a senior vice president, concerns with her ability to sign an abatement agreement with the future owner of the property. Once the Hartford business finishes the renovations in Hartford, the building will be demolished. No need for an abatement. Is first electman Lisa Heven governing by premature abagements prior to any sale of a business? Did first electman Lisa Heven have given an abatement to Big Y? Every abatement increases the taxes for the residents. Thank you for listening, and I will put my comments on www.simsbury.com, Simsbury Patch, and Simsbury Topic.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak going this way? Well, Coe, we're going to continue going this way, and then we'll come back. Anyone going this way? Lisa. And then I'll come back and catch anyone who isn't.
Thank you very much. Those were some pretty serious issues that were brought up, so let me add a little lightness to the beginning here, and hopefully inform you of some very positive things that are happening with the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. We are still investigating the possibility of moving our office and creating a town hub with other town organizations, and we just held a meeting on Friday to discuss that further. And one of the things that we're hopeful will be in this new hub office is a tourism office or visitor center. And it's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen decided at some point in the early 2000s that it would be a good idea to have a visitor center in town, and that was, it was at that time that I believe it was decided to be located in what is the Ensign House, that used to be Webster Bank, and the art gallery that Phil Janes had over there. So it was located there for a number of years, and then relocated over to Fiddler's Green for some time. But it's been about four or five years since we've had a tourism department or tourism office or a visitor center. So it's hopefully about time that we have another one, and that'll be one of the things that'll be in our new office. Our next Good Morning Simsbury will be Wednesday, March 25, at 8:00 at Berkshire Hathaway Home Services over by the Simsbury Town Shops. Our next after-hours will be on Wednesday, March 18. It's going to be a St. Patrick's Day theme, and Ed is hosting us, up with the Virginia Connolly residence, so that should be a lot of fun. And each of our after-hours events are now starting at 5:30, and immediately prior to that, we have a speaker. And this month, we are going to have a member by the name of Becky Pardo, whose business is HR results. She's going to be answering everything you ever wanted to know about HR. So there's a lot of small businesses in town that don't necessarily have the financial means or the staff for their own HR department, and they might have a lot of questions about that particular issue. So she'll be there to answer those questions. We are still hoping to launch our new website very soon, by probably, March 23 is the target date that we have right now for that, and it's going to be some pretty exciting stuff on there, so I'll be looking forward to your comments on that. And like you guys, our Board of Directors has begun the 2015-2016 budget planning process, and at this morning's meeting, they decided that it will not be necessary for a dues increase this year, which was very good news. We haven't increased our dues in three years. It'll now be at least four years before we have to do that, so that was good news. And we've also decided to contract with a company called CI Destinations, who is going to plan a trip somewhere wonderful for chamber members and anyone else who is interested in joining us. They go to places like Spain, Italy, Eastern Europe, Ireland, Scotland, so we'll be planning a trip somewhere in 2016. So I'll have more information about that. That should be a lot of fun. And finally, the chamber is forming a health and wellness task force, and their first meeting is going to be this Thursday, March 12, at 4:00. And the responsibility of the task force will be basically to promote health, wellness, and physical fitness in the workplace and in the community as a whole through education, outreach, and community events. So we are looking for members who are interested in being on that task force.
Thank you, Lisa. Very much appreciated. Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
We'll go, anyone else? I'll come back over here. Oops, sorry. John, and then I'll get to you. We'll keep going until we get done.
For sure. I'm John Shaver, 16 Lossbrook Road, West Simsbury. I wish to make a few comments tonight about the senior site selection, senior center site selection. At the public hearing held on March 4, 2015, the conclusion appeared to be that the Board of Selectmen needed to consider more options other than this state parking lot site in Eno Memorial Hall. I was dismayed to hear calls for consideration of the Bushy Hill Road site. I just wish to remind the board about some of the issues which eliminate the Bushy Hill Road sites from consideration. The first issue concerns the aquifer protection zone. The Bushy Hill Stratton Brook Road site is located on an aquifer protection zone, and the potential contamination from this project could contaminate the town's primary water supply at Aquifer. The second issue concerns open space. The town's voters have already made it clear that the open space east of Iron Horse Boulevard and the Ethel Walker Woods property should remain open space and not be developed. The senior center building footprint, along with the site improvements, would remove a significant amount of that open space at both the PAC and the Bushy Hill Road sites. The third issue concerns the town center zone. During the town center charrette, it was agreed that the town should encourage future development in the town center zone, including the senior center. The fourth issue concerns the site assessments. All of the site assessments that were done for the senior center have rendered Eno Hall as the best choice. All of these issues were considered by the board at a previous meeting, where the board voted to remove the Bushy Hill Road site from consideration. Thank you for your attention and for your service to the town.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I'm Theodore Ginni, 100 Gate Lane, Simsbury, Connecticut. I want to let this board know about the concerns SCTV has regarding the senior center staying in a renovated Eno. First, if Eno is renovated for the senior center, SCTV would need to be relocated in order to continue providing meeting coverage, program development, and editing capabilities. SCTV relocation costs are expensive because of the cabling and equipment, so a single move would be most cost-efficient, and that would mean that we would need to literally just pick up from where we are, move to a new location, and stay there. And in order to do that, SCTV would need to do a capital fundraising project in order to raise the funds in order to do that. Second, the need for a black box for SCTV is for the studio environment only. Human beings need sunlight and fresh air, and we have staff, and they have to remain in the vicinity of the studio, so our offices need access to windows. Okay? And the other thing is, SCTV relies heavily on volunteers, and we want to be a welcoming, accessible, nonprofit, in order to make sure that people feel comfortable coming into the studio, using it, learning, and just, it just needs to be part of the community. Okay? SCTV would love to be included in a media center for the town residents to enjoy the benefits of a collaborative effort between the library, the schools, the town, and SCTV. I want to thank you for your continued support of SCTV's mission and vision. We request that SCTV's needs for appropriate, accessible, and welcoming studio and office space be considered as you review and consider locations for the senior community center, and I will be happy to discuss SCTV's actual physical needs with any Board of Commission that you appoint.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Going back this way. Chris.
Hi, Chris Barnett, 15 Ock joke. I'm here as the Vice Chair of Economic Development Commission. I first would like to publicly thank the volunteers who have donated their time and talent on the Economic Development Task Force for over a year now. There's been a lot of great work, which you're going to hear about shortly, that has been out of there. And I do want to encourage you, when you're considering the vote on the new website proposal and the contract with Virtual Town Hall, that the EDC did vote unanimously the other day at a special meeting, to support that. This has been a long time coming in terms of a project that came up at a meeting almost four years ago as a way to promote responsible economic development here in Simsbury that's consistent with the town plan. So, you know, thank you for listening to the presentation tonight, and hope it goes well.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Back. Anyone over here? Last call for public audience. Okay.
How about this side?
Oh, yeah, I finished that way. You happy to go with you?
Over to here?
No.
All right.
Yeah, just be careful.
Don't start the clock yet. I'd like to have some notes here. Thank you. Is that going to interfere with anything? Don Zaler, 1 West Street. I'm here to talk about the senior center, okay? I was part of the subcommittee that was developed back in 2011, along with other people, to investigate what should we do about a senior center. After much investigation, deliberation, consultation, in, three years later, in May of last year, we submitted a report to the Board of Selectmen along the lines, among other things, of stating that Eno, by a vote of nine to two, would not suit the needs of the seniors either today or in the future. By the same token, by a vote of eight to one, it was determined that the Performing Arts Center was not suitable. And yet, for some unexplained reason, those sites are still on the table by the Board of Selectmen, with no explanation, not even any inquiry into the subcommittee as to how did they arrive at their conclusions. So let me spend, hopefully, enough within the next five minutes to explain our rationale. Let's talk about the Performing Arts Center. The best description I can have for that particular site, it is horrible. Right now, it's in the process of being turned into one big mud hole. On the east, it's bordered by wetlands. On the south, you've got a vermin-infested swamp. To the north, you've got the backside of a bench hill that's not particularly attractive. It towers over the entire site, and if you put any building over there, that is going to overpower aesthetically any building that you put in there. And to add to the beauty of the site, in the summer, you've got 40 party potties, 30 trash barrels, and 10 recycle bills. So, interestingly, there's a dog run on there. And this is my thinking, not the board. If you put a senior center down there, you're throwing us to the dogs, okay? That's me. That's enough of you watching. Okay, let's talk about Eno. Again, there was a vote of, what did I say, nine to two against Eno. There are a lot of brick-and-mortar problems associated with Eno. Really, really, really nasty, nasty things. But overriding, and I don't have time to get into that, but overriding the whole thing is parking, the issue of parking. The whole reason for forming the subcommittee was because there was a parking problem. And it was agreed early on that you need at least 100 spaces and room for expansion. The architect has come up with several parking plans. The best he can do is maybe somewhere between 60 and 70 parking spaces. That's with a million-dollar parking debt, a ramp, and parking below it. So if you need 100, you can only fit 70, why would you throw even $1 at expanding Eno? You're not solving the problem. The very problem that the subcommittee was formed, well, the big problem that they had to address is parking, and Eno doesn't solve it. There's no more land. What you've got is what's going to be there. There's no way to increase that. So if, that's, anyway, that's the rationale behind the subcommittee's report. So if the board has some other rationale to explain why Eno and why the Performing Arts Center is still on the agenda, I would be delighted to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. Across the audience, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. With that, we will move on to the first selectman's report, no, to presentations. We'll start with the presentation from the Economic Development Task Force.
I'm a staff coordinator for the Economic Development Task Force. I was given that job a while ago. It's been interesting. Been a number of meetings that originally started off at, I think there were once a month initially, then they were twice a month, and then now they're periodic, depending upon what the various subcommittees' tasks are. Just quickly, just to remind some of you that may not recall, originally when we did the Phase One marketing study, there was a Phase Two to that as well. And the Phase Two study was called Summary of Findings and Next Steps in Economic Implementation and Marketing Action Study, done by Fairweather Associates. One of the things that the town wanted to do was to try to minimize the expense of completing Phase Two, and so what was set up was the Economic Development Task Force to look at that Phase Two sort of next steps and to proceed from that. The Economic Development Task Force has divided into a number of groups you'll hear about this evening. I'll let Jeff talk about that a bit more. But just to say, let you know that this is exactly what the Economic Development Task Force was set up to do, so if you have any questions, either before or after, I'm happy to answer those, the best I can as their staff person. And we'll let Jeff go ahead and talk a little bit about what the task force has accomplished to date and where we are going from here. Thanks very much.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Jeff.
This task force has been working for about a year, and it was shortly after we got started that we broke into these three working groups. I'm obviously chair of the marketing group. Deb can't be here tonight, but Wayne Copley is here tonight, Chair of the Process Committee. It's been an interesting adventure, and the thing of it is, is that none of us are elected to anything, none of us are running for anything, so we wanted to try and do some practical, actionable items, so I hope that you'll see it that way as we go forward. I'm going to talk first about my, yes, thank you. I'm going to talk first about my marketing group. We started out with agreeing on a core idea. Our core idea is that since there is a high-value community, quality of life is a chief attraction for people looking to move here, and a key reason for people to stay, as well as a cheap asset for retaining and attracting businesses. Just think about that through my whole process, because it's really important that a good community attracts people, a good community attracts businesses. When we walk through our supporting concepts for that theme, you're going to recognize all of these, because every time we have a discussion about the town, all of these same ideas come up. And I think that that's really a good thing, because people have very consistent, strong feelings, good, positive feelings about town. EDC, originally, EDC asked us to work on a website for that. And I'm a marketing professional. I've done this my whole adult life. Other people on this committee have done it their whole adult life. And the one thing that we know is that if you don't have a staff, if you don't have people to support a website, it dies. people to support a website, it does. It looks really interesting for about a day, and then it starts to deteriorate over time. It's not a digital brochure. And the other thing is brand. Brand is about experience. Brand isn't about what you want to say to people. You hear people talking about brand all the time. Brand is how people feel about you. It's what people say about you. So as I put up here, you can't keep telling people that you're smart and good-looking and not show it on your website. That's the way that you talk to people. So we went out and we looked at a lot of sites. Marlboro has, they have a lot of nice things about this site in terms of how they organize their material. Phoenix is really good at calling out their awards, and Simsbury has a number of awards that we could call out and we could do this. Now, this is an economic development site. The Marlboro site's an economic development site. All these have staffs of 18 to 20, right? So a little different than us. Same thing with San Diego. It's very modern, looks like a place you'd like to go, but this is also a site that has, they have a huge staff. So then we went to towns. We went to towns that maybe didn't have the same sort of support, that they weren't going to be able to grow in economic development staff. Cupertino, California is in the news again because of Apple. Very simple site, lots of nice citizen access icons on the left. It's very quiet, but there's lots of information on it. It's very easy to find your way around. Nashville, Tennessee. Nashville has changed its brand image. Nashville, you used to think of Grand Ole Opry, and that was all you thought about Nashville. Now you think about a growing, modern town. It's a big city now, and a lot of people from this region are moving. So all of that in mind, we went back to, we were originally charged with paying attention to the marketing study, the Fairweather Consulting Report. And the Fairweather Report said, look, you guys have done a good idea. You've already done a good job of identifying your brand and putting it out there. Continue along this line. So we took that concept and combined it with what we had seen in Nashville and said, what would happen for our town brand? And this is really the brand we put forward, not the EDC brand. It's a town brand that you put forward. If we just took this Nashville site and made it look like us, so it doesn't look like Nashville anymore, now it looks like us. And then we had some conversations around that. Some of you have seen this, we've looked at it. And then we went and went to Rick Bizzotto and said, give me some analytics. Give us some analytics so that we can look at what are the top eight, nine, 10 pages that people come and search for? Because that's always where you start, is what people are currently searching for. You can't always stay there, because sometimes they'll search for it because it's not there, or it's not finding. But you start with what are the pages that people come to all the time. So we then changed the site. You can't really see it on this, but believe me, we changed the site to then adjust to make sure that these top 10 items can be found easily. And then I came to a meeting with town staff the other day, and we started talking about the website. One of the things that happens if you don't list everything, if you go to the current website, Simsbury website, it just lists everything you want, it's just listed. And you can find it eventually. What happens with newer websites, and the town employees were happy to do this, is you put a calendar together, and you only put things up, things only come forward when they're due. They only come forward in their time. When there's summer classes, summer classes come up. When taxes are due, taxes come up. When there's a question at hand, these big areas bring forward the topic of the day, because everything's not a topic every day. Everything can be found if you go and look for it. But you put the topics of the day forward first. So so far, we've had a really good reaction to this. We've had a good reaction to the idea of upping our brand. The only thing that was in the way was time and money. Fix the price, right? So we talked to the current vendor who handles the town site now. Because if we went out for an RFP and wanted to start this over, this is going to cost a god-awful amount of money, somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 to do. We knew that that money's not there. It's not available. So we went and we showed this site and a number of other sites that we liked to the town, to the current vendors, and we said, can you do this? Can you make this? If we give this to you, can you make it? Yes, they can make it. That's great. And you don't have to change anything that the employees do, because we don't want to go through a big retraining on the backside, because all the town employees have enough to do.
And there's no money.
So we don't. Again, time and money. So we can stay within the same platform that we're working in now, and they can redo the website, they can reapply the website according to whatever format we tell them for $10,000. That, I think you're going to vote on that later tonight. That's a great number, and if you can do it, that's wonderful, and we can move ahead. We're obligated as volunteers, we've taken this far as volunteers, we're obligated as volunteers to stay with it. They're not going to design for that kind of money. They're going to do what we tell them to do for that kind of money. So we have to stay with this a little bit longer to tell them what to do. The next thing I'd like to talk about is this program group came up with this amazing piece of paper. It is two sides of a sheet of paper, and it's meant to be a discussion guide for the Economic Development Commission. And Economic Development Commission is not really driven by law. It doesn't have any power. It just makes recommendations, it evaluates and makes recommendations. And what we've seen over the years is that the conversation goes all over the place. And that's not the fault of this group, it's not the fault of any group. This has been chronic with Economic Development Commissions here and every place else. And what this provides is consistency in common language. They can sit, when people come in, and when somebody comes in, they can know in advance what the Economic Development Commission is going to be thinking when they get there. Now, there's a sense of, we have a common language, we have a common purpose. I think it's going to, this simple piece of paper that took a long time for Deb's group to put together will have lasting effect. The other thing that they did was they put together a business incentive program, and the concept behind this was to try to put everything in one place, try to put rules and regulations, put recommendations all in one place, that if you're going to make any kind of business incentive for new business or existing business, just put it all in one place, because it's confusing to try to figure out what the town will do, what the town won't want to do, and when they're going to do it. You'll get this, you've probably seen drafts, but you'll get full recommendations on this later on. And the last group, which is the Process Group, Wayne's here tonight, and Wayne will talk to you the next time, it won't be me, but the issue that here is, and this is such a big number, they have a lot of courage, is to try and add efficiency and streamline the land use application process. And this doesn't mean to change the effect or the outcome of anyone who goes before land use, whether it's positive or negative. This is to get to that positive or negative response just more quickly and more predictably and more transparently, which is what we're all looking for. So as a, next steps for our commission, because we do have 10 more months before we're allowed to step aside.
Tick-tock, tick-tock.
It's a release program.
Nine months, 27 days.
There's no early release.
We have a lot of work to do on the website to get that ready for release, and then we're going to go back and look at the Economic Development Commission like they originally asked us to do, and figure out what can be streamlined, what can go to executive summary, what can be communicated better and easier for them. So we'll go back and take a look at that. The business incentive, as I said, should be available to look at next month. Wayne will be back with his recommendations. I'm not going to put a predictor on that, because I think that's really just an amazing thing to tackle. So that's where we are. I hope that you will approve the funds for the website, because this is what I do for a living. I wouldn't do it for that. It's a great bargain. And I think the town will benefit for a long time. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, Jeff.
Thank you.
Lisa, can we ask questions?
Yes.
Jeff, first of all, thank you for the update, and I did have an opportunity to go to one of your subcommittees, and I really liked the direction that you're going with the website. The question I actually have is the 10-more-month marching order, so to speak. And I only discovered this as I was looking just for the budget history on the $10,000 tonight, and went back to the initial charge of the subcommittee, which was pretty grand. There was a lot of stuff that was listed that I think commits it to some fairly long-term objectives. I guess my question is, what is the committee going to be doing specifically over the next 10 months? And I guess the only other issue I'll throw up there is, we really haven't discussed a subcommittee going for 10 more months from a budgetary point of view and needing additional funds through next year. So I'm just kind of tossing that out to the group as well. So I guess a little bit more concreteness in what are you looking to do in the next 10 months, I guess, you know, what would be focused on?
Well, I can speak concretely for my marketing department more than, my marketing group more than for anybody else. And what we've, we've made a bit of a mess, and now we need to clean it up over the next 10 months, is that we've made a bold proposal that we think is a good idea and good for the town to go forward. But like I said, in order to do it for the price that we've got the vendor to agree to, they are not going to work through, as we've already done several times with town staff, with citizenry, what needs to be where, what's it need to look like, how are we going to go forward with that? So that's a big chunk, and that's probably about three or four months' worth of work. The other thing for my committee, too, is to look at EDC and then look at best practices of other economic development, because we always want to try to be the best if we can. And to reorganize and restate their information in a way that it's palatable, understandable. This may not be the right place for you, but you should know more quickly whether it is or not. Put a little bit of marketing language in it, where we're not going to do that on the town website, we want to do that for economic development. There's a lot of work left to do for my committee in the next 10 months.
Okay.
And Wayne can speak to his committee, but I guarantee that for, to try and streamline the land use application is just such a complicated.
Right. Yeah, because that's a huge, huge project. Right.
A couple of the recommendations that have been made by Wayne's group, and a lot of them are far-reaching and long-term. There were a number of short-term, short-range suggestions that are easier to put into words, but there are some long-range ones as well. And so I think it's going to be not difficult at all to fill up the next 10 months' worth of meetings with regard to making progress in some of those long-range suggestions. Some of those are going to be outside the committee's jurisdiction and authority, there's no question about that. And so some of the recommendations may be to establish other types of groups to look at these things. It might be to have a charter revision commission, take a look at certain reorganization principles or whatever. I want to be really clear that because this involves process, which obviously involves me directly on a day-to-day basis, I want to be very clear that I've been very receptive to whatever suggestions the committee makes. I can talk to them about how things work today and how we can make it better, hopefully, but some of these definitely are going to be longer range. So those kinds of things will come up as well, and hope to move those things forward as well.
If I can, I can answer for Deb, who's not here, but we actually just recently had a chairs meeting to talk about that very thing. We wrap in 10, but we really want to be driving towards eight, so that as we pull those last two months together, we're taking everything and being able to organize it into what have we implemented, where our deliverables and where our recommendations are. And Deb and their group, and Lisa was a former member of that, have been so, actually, two of the deliverables up there are there, so they're looking back to, and what you referenced was, we put together sort of an extremely long list of what we could do, and then we realized we had to target, so that we could get to a couple of specific things and focuses for each of those groups. But again, process has finished, or excuse me, programs has finished their work, so they're going to go back and look to see some other things that they can do. And as far as the budget goes, and I explained to the EDC that the monies associated with through the last budget cycle, between the marketing for the, or the work for the website and then some other supplemental needs that may be needed that we've sort of alluded to when we had a couple of meetings, photography or writing or different things could be used within that budget, and then some other marketing materials that will be impacted by the refreshing of the brand that's going to happen with the website. But we foresee a lot of that being pulled together with these monies within this year. And so no need, we may have recommendations that are longer-reaching, possibly impacting the operation, operating budget on a long-term basis, but those will come forward with the summary of the group's work. So I just want to thank you all so much. It's a pleasure to chair that group, and Chris has joined with Lisa now being the First Selectman, and I look forward to your continued participation as well. And it's a group of very talented people, giving a lot of their time from various professional backgrounds, and that was the key reason behind bringing those folks together, was that they can lend their expertise. And I really do want to thank Jeff and Chris Barnett, who I know spoke earlier, Mark Demming, the Chair of the EDC. A lot of these folks have been, you know, patiently waiting for some of this stuff to happen, and we're very excited, because we're at this point that we are right now. And Jeff, although he thinks he's not excited about the next 10 months, really is. I know he is secretly, so.
I'm going to keep it very secret.
The only thing I, just the one thing I would suggest is, I do think looking at the process and trying to streamline it, that's a fairly big mission overall, and it might make some sense to, at some point, have an opportunity to review in a little bit more detail how that would play out, and you know, who would be involved as well. I mean, part of it is making sure, there's a lot of constituencies, obviously, that are going to, I mean, if you think a website is tough, you know, there's going to be a lot of constituencies that are going to want to add recommendations to that. So it might make sense that we really have an opportunity to look at how that whole process is going to play out.
And Chris, I also, as a resident, I serve as staff along with Hyrum. And just very quickly, you know, one of the other things that they're doing, they're in the evaluation period. And that's why I think it's taken a little bit longer to see deliverables, because it is something that is so much larger, and you're working with, you know, Hyrum, overseas seven boards and commissions, and so there's a lot of moving parts. So they're currently still in the evaluation period. We're looking at other towns, you know, best practices, what works, what doesn't. So I agree, you'll start to see much more tailored information come out of that group, but they're doing a great job evaluating all of the facets.
And if I could, the purpose of the task force is to do something that the other commissions are either don't have the time or the inclination to do. It's our job to make a recommendation. You take them or throw them away. At some point, that's just the way it is. Our job is just to try and think of new things and recommend them. If it's a good idea and it's within the budget, then we can do it. And if not, well, at least there's a new idea that hit the table.
Jeff, I appreciate you saying that. One thing about the town website, it's actually an administrative function of the town. So the final, you've made excellent recommendations, and I look forward to more recommendations. But as you know, at the end of the day, it's a functioning website that enables us to administer to the town, and we need to make sure it functions in accordance with FOIA, with our emergency response needs, with aging and disability requirements. So there will be some things we would love to put in that we may not be able to, but we'll, of course, consult with you and many other groups as we go through this process. So very much appreciate the effort you've done on this and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I should also, I just want to thank Hyrum and Sarah specifically, and also Rick Bizzotto, who, you know, I mean, again, he's been meeting with EDC and other groups, and then he's been brought in to help us out here, and Jeff alluded to this, but what makes this a real win-win? And you talk about an RFP, and even if you saw recently Enfield spending $38,000 on their new website. This really gives us the ability to keep the back end of this, of the town hall, what is already, staff is already trained on and all those things. So Rick is going to lead this and work with Virtual Town Hall, and hopefully with Lisa's point of a balanced approach, making sure we fulfill the needs of the town, but also put something together that I think fulfills what the marketing study was really aiming to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll go to the First Selectmen's report. Simsbury was recently identified as Connecticut's Best Choice for Young Families. NerdWallet, a web-based service designed to help people make informed financial decisions, has identified Simsbury as the number-one best town for young families in Connecticut. Using metrics such as home affordability, prosperity and growth,
using metrics such as home affordability, prosperity and growth, quality of education, and family friendliness. NerdWallet concluded that Simsbury, and I quote, "offers young families an outstanding combination of affordability and quality schools. A median household can expect to pay 22% of monthly income on homeownership costs, the lowest in the top 10." Simsbury also has Great Schools rating of nine out of 10. Active families will want to get out and play on the 84-mile Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, which runs through Simsbury. So that goes to sort of what the marketing people were saying. This is a quality of life that drives our community. While the residents know that Simsbury is a great value, it's good to see that organizations which thrive by giving people good advice are promoting Simsbury, so we're thrilled with that. I'm pleased to report that I have been appointed to the Moore Commission, which provides a platform for town officials to work with state legislators on initiatives to improve regional efficiencies. The Moore Commission was instrumental in making the Nutmeg Network available to municipalities, and I would like to thank Mary Glassman, who began that initiative and who continues to serve in the Moore Commission with me. It was also responsible for the Nutmeg Network demonstration projects, which received funding from the state and which provide towns with the opportunity to work collectively on projects utilizing the Nutmeg Network. Through this, for example, the town is participating in the VoIP demonstration project, so we're looking forward to that. I will report back to you on the commission's progress, and I'll look to you for any suggestions you have on regional efficiencies, and hope that we can have some good discussions on that. According to the town's assessor, David Gardner, the town of Simsbury's grand list grew to $2,269 billion in 2014, which is an increase of over $17 million, or 0.757%, as compared to the 2013 grand list. According to the assessor, most of the growth was due to personal properties, such as the improvements made to Eversource Substation in the northern part of town. It's obviously good news that we have been in a position to report positive growth now for two years. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their part in supporting economic development in Simsbury, and for continuing a conservative approach to town budgeting to ensure that Simsbury remains in a competitive position. And with that, we will move on to action items. The first one is easy.
It's all downhill from there.
May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $4,420.24?
Move that.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Before us, on our next item, we have possible action on the senior center, Community Center. We have, and this has several components. We did have a request from the Board of Finance at their last meeting that this board conduct a survey on the senior center. It wasn't clear exactly what they wanted from the survey, but they felt they needed more information to make a decision. It was at that point that I suggested, well, if we're going to do a survey, we should look to what we did in 2008 in the town survey and do a comprehensive survey. So if this board decides to do a survey at all, they were amenable to doing a broader survey, not just on the senior center. The second thing we will be considering is on the location of the senior center and a financial commitment. And there are many, one thing I'll say about all the sites out there, is I suspect, just as there were various disagreement and comments in the public audience, there will be disagreements on this board, and the vote may not be unanimous. But what I feel I can say confidently is that once the decision is finally made, this board, in its entirety, will come together and make whatever choice we choose the best it can be. And I just ask for affirmation from my board on that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I hope that the community will join us after the decision is made, is coming together and make it the best we can. And we will reach out to all the affected groups, including SC2V, of course, our seniors, our business community. And the one thing I want to say, you'll see a lot of schematics, there have been a lot of schematics about the different senior center sites, and they're actually not. They're not architectural drawings about what could be there. They're space holders, and they talk about what kind of space would be needed for the programming. So once we pick a site, we'll actually do the design. So what you've been seeing are not actual designs. So nobody worry about what it looks like right now. That, we're at the very beginning of that process.
That's the funds we already have approved, right? At 250?
Yes. We do have some funds set aside for that, and Mr. Hampton did bring home some money for the town, for the senior center recently, through the state legislature. So, what we have before us is a recommendation from the building committee to pick, select the public, building committee recommended that we pick the state-lot site behind Bank of America as the site for the senior center. Before we take a motion on that, as is respectful to do, since they were the committee charged with making the recommendation, I would ask this board for comments on where we are right now.
With respect to, with respect to that site in particular?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or we can go ahead and take a vote, if you want, and then we can move on to other sites and selections, if you'd like.
I'm happy to do this, however you want. I mean, maybe just put a motion on the table, and then we can discuss before we actually vote.
Sure. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the building committee's recommendation to build a senior center on the state-lot site behind the Bank of America?
I will move that for purpose of discussion.
I will second that. Okay. And we will begin discussion on that site. So we'll start with that site. I have thoughts on that site. We do have, as you know, a recommendation of cost. Jeff, can you speak to the cost on the state-lot site?
The cost on the state site that we've been working with Tom Arkery with Quisenberry Arkery Architects, come up with an estimate of cost of, it would be $7.4 million if the site was obtained at no cost, and $8.2 million if it was obtained at a cost of $800,000.
And that is for the full programming needs of the senior center. We did with Eno do some reduced programming needs, so that price could come down, or no?
At the DOT site? Again, that was for the full program. We've never really discussed anything less than the full program at the DOT site. Certainly, the project could be downsized if it needed to be.
Jeff, could you speak to some of the uncertainties with the site itself, and how we would go about evaluating that?
Sure. The site presently is encumbered with two utilities. One is a sanitary sewer that we've looked at fairly carefully in terms of relocating it, come up with an estimate of about $250,000 to relocate that. There is also along the western portion of the perimeter of the site, or the taking area, a AT&amp;T long-line fiber optic cable. From what we know right now, we believe that cable is outside of our building envelope, and it's something we think we can manage without any relocation. The other unknown, I think, as we had discussed, is the environmental condition of the site. The site was part of an old railroad property. Traditionally, railroad properties can have contamination associated with the old coal fuels and oils that were used. We just don't know what the condition of the site is. There can, could be nothing on the site, but there also potentially could be remediation costs, and we don't know what those are at this point.
And is there an issue with testing the site?
We have met with DOT in terms of getting more information relative to purchasing the site, and we did request, we did ask the question if they would give us right-of-entry to do environmental testing. They said they would not give us right-of-entry, that we would have to buy the property as-is. We think we could get some information on the site through testing of the perimeter of the site on property that we own. That would give us an indication, but we have not pursued that at this time.
So just an analogy, that's kind of like buying a house without an inspection, right?
A little bit.
It's like buying a house in as-is condition.
Yeah, or taking pictures from the street, but you can't get any closer than that. Yeah.
Is the $250,000 estimate for the sanitary sewer line moved included in the $8.2 million?
It is.
Okay.
Also, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at Mr. Peck's. I asked him to put together sort of what other planning boards or land use boards would have to take a look at all these sites, because one of the things that's important for this board and the public to understand is that we may, we may make a decision tonight, but it will be subject to several other boards' approvals that could deny it. And those boards, for the various projects, of course, include the Board of Finance, our board. In some sites, it might be the Conservation and Wetlands Board. It may be Planning, and it may be Zoning. So there are some, even if we make a decision, I just want people to understand that there may be obstacles with other boards as we go down the line. I did confirm with Mr. Peck today that there are no known barriers at this time, but like you said, that we, there are some unknowns. We're not entirely sure of the wetlands conditions on the Performing Arts Center site, so that would have to be investigated. There are some unknowns, as Jeff pointed out, with the environmental conditions at the state-lot site at this point. So there are a number of unknowns. It is, the DOT parking lot site is not currently zoned for a senior center, so that would have to be a zone change. And it's not currently consistent with the charrette, although it could, they could make it, a change to make it consistent. But those are some obstacles that are out there with that site.
All right.
And the purchase itself?
The purchase itself, we could do, well, if we want to buy the site tomorrow for $800,000, I checked with council, and that could be done very quickly, within a month or less. If we want to go back to the legislature, we'd have to do that fairly quickly and ask them to consider an administrative sale, which could be sold, since we're using it for municipal purposes. They could give it to us for basically administrative costs, close to nothing. But the caveat there is that we'd have to use the whole site for municipal purposes. So you couldn't do a, you couldn't do a shared senior center with shops around it, because if you do any mixed use at all, you have to pay the full $800. And I just asked Tom and Jeff to confirm that I have that right.
Actually, we could revert. I mean, it's a...
Oh, that would be fun.
... or, or guaranteed it's ours.
Okay.
Right.
With that, so Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this site came into the fold relatively late in the process, didn't it?
Yeah, this came up midpoint last year, when they were asked to look at sites, additional sites in the senior area.
Right, so it was never part of that original numbering system and site detractive process? There was a...
It actually was part of that process.
Was it?
And I believe it was in the top five at that time.
Okay. I thought that that was, I thought that was the site across the street, okay. Talking about the woods.
That site was part of the initial evaluation.
One of the advantages of that site, and I think that really influenced the building committee's decision, is that it's a very clean site from a building perspective. There isn't a lot of reconstruction of the ground. I mean, obviously, there may be remediation of, we find environmental problems and some utility moves, but it's a, it's a flat area, it's a buildable area. So from just a building perspective, in terms of ease of build, it is a very logical and reasonable choice. And I asked the architect to speak to any, do you have anything to add in what the committee considered and why they chose that site?
Lisa, just for information, of the six that were ranked, it ended up being the third highest, behind the Performing Arts Center and Bushy Hill, Stratton Brook.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Tom Arkery from Quisenberry Arkery Architects, that I refer to as Iron Horse Boulevard site, was chosen and was considered very favorable, because it would allow a new facility as opposed to a renovated facility, all on one story, relatively easy to construct at that particular site. We did find that there were some challenges, as Jeff pointed out, but generally, those could be addressed from a technical standpoint.
Can you speak to the parking availability on that site?
Yes, there's significant availability of parking at that site compared to, in this particular case, the Eno site. It was within the downtown district. Originally, it was considered of significant importance that the center be within the downtown, the center district. This sort of met that requirement. There were, there were many very positive things that had us consider the site, as well as the possibility that the community could potentially acquire the site, you know, potentially acquire at low cost.
And right now, do you know how many parking spaces there are on the site right now, as it exists?
Right now, there's about 200 spaces.
And after the building is built, there would be about 100?
About 100 spaces, including the easement area that's presently being leased by the town, which is, includes the adjacent right-of-way for the, for the DOT that they're going to retain.
So in terms of impact to the Performing Arts Center performances, if we built there, they would lose about 100 spots?
About 100.
Okay.
And in that particular plan, there was potential added cost considered for offset parking, I believe at the PAC scheme. In regards to the parking, throughout the entire assessment, our team has sort of targeted about 100 cars would be the ideal number to have what I would call dedicated or adjacent to the building, within walking distance to the sidewalk. Obviously, that's not viable to achieve at all the sites, but because this site is in the downtown district, or center district, that 100 spots would also be complemented by the on-street parking, the different lots. It's important to note that, you know, the whole idea of the, of the center village district is to, you know, have sort of shared parking throughout the district, in that you walk to the facility. In the case of the senior center, that's not the ideal solution, because many of the patrons do have physical challenges, not all of them, of course. But if you can get as much of this recommended parking adjacent to the building, that's a positive. And in this case, obviously, you could hit that target.
I thought Mr. Peck was going to stay for this discussion. Is he still in the building?
Can I ask, making a question about the parking? I know she's here, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but for the parking question, because I know this is a big issue. How often would you say you actually use 100 spots?
Well, given that we have any regular day, an average day, we have about 159 people there.
All at the same time?
Not all at the same time, throughout the day. You know, it's hard to say. It's when we have a big event, mostly, that we would take all of the...
But on a regular day, would you say there's normally 30 spots filled, or 50 spots, or how many would you say?
We only have 37, and they're always filled. And when we have lots of events going on at the same time, the staff parks in the commuter lot, they give up those spaces, and they're all, they park all along the street. So I would say they're all taken, because we have a lot of fitness classes every day.
So mostly, good exercise classes?
Yeah, and lunches. Wednesdays, for instance.
And Cheese Day?
Cheese Day, yeah. Bread Day, Tuesdays.
Super Tuesday?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Well, I've been to several of those events, and I know it's challenging, and, you know, do a lot of the people who attend, say Cheese Day, or come with dial ride? I'm just wondering if we had improved access for dial rides, say the drop-off zone, or...
You know, I would say probably under 10 come from dial ride. And we've already, driving so, using that example, we have 100 people that come from Cheese Day, as you know. I can't say every day, at the same time that 100 sponsor meetings, but I'd say on most days, there are at least 50 to 75 at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to also add that when we did our target projection for 100 cars, that takes into account not only average mean use or peak use currently, but it's also trying to factor in what the use of the facility is going to be once it's expanded. As one of the members from the public, Don, pointed out, he's not hearing, oh, Don, sorry, pointed out, is that one of the obstacles senior center use is there is not enough parking. So programs are restricted significantly by the fact that seniors won't come. So that's where we hit the target 100. And again, our goal is to try and get as close to that as possible.
That's awesome. You took it to effect, the senior population growth projected for the next 30 years, which is fairly significant. I don't know if you'd like to speak to that?
That's correct. We also did a demographic evaluation of the community's population and what projected, you know, impact is going to be on use of the center. That was one of the ways we established the program and what the parking needs would be. But additionally, we also... But additionally, we also looked at a number of other communities that have recently expanded their senior centers, have similar population demographics to Simsbury, and tried to evaluate what their parking needs are, or identify what their parking needs are, and then apply that to your project. So again, it all works out on a daily basis of, in the ballpark, of, in, within a peach basket of that 100, 100 parking spaces. Now, that won't necessarily address the demand if you're having a 200-seat holiday dinner, but the goal too is to identify what is sort of the key parking amount, so that you're not, you know, underparked on a daily basis. We don't want to create a big open parking lot.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Arcary?
Hiram, yes, go ahead.
I'm, I have some real concerns with using the Iron Horse Boulevard site. I, I do think it's, while it may, on the surface, appear to address this concern right now, it does conflict with the charrette that we did. It does restrict us going forward with using possible mixed use down there, and working around that, that AT&amp;T trunk line that goes through there is, is, is a big deal. I haven't heard anything that sways me to, to support that particular site, but the night's not over yet, so we'll keep listening.
Hiram, can you come and speak a little bit about the charrette? You know, I had spoken with you earlier, and you felt none of the, that you could work with any of the sites that this board chose, but you did, I did ask you to do a memo, and you did a lovely job explaining the planning, land use process for each site. And if you want to just talk a little bit about, I think Mike raised an interesting point, and a good point, about its compatibility with the charrette and our overall vision for the town. If you could speak to a little bit of that, and how, if there was a zone chain, we, we do know for a fact that it's not zoned for this, could we do something there in terms of mixed use with the senior center that would be, in your mind, compatible with the charrette, through planning and build?
Sure. Let me, if you want, I'll go briefly just over what you asked me to do with regard to processing times.
Sure.
Each of the sites I went through, looked at the processing times, at least from what we know now, looked at the processing time for each site. So for example, the Performing Arts Center site has some issues with regard to floodplain that the other sites don't have. So just exactly how we dealt with that, and how we gather that information, and how the structure was designed to take that into account, and how the rest of the site would be, would be dealt with, leaves us, based upon the calculations that I did, it would take approximately, after receiving an acceptable application and plans, about 180 days for local processing. That doesn't include, for example, whether, if DEP or FEMA or the Corps of Engineers got involved in that particular site, which is another question which, which I, I can't answer at this time until we know what, what the parameters are.
That's a potential obstacle and an unknown at this point.
It is. And it's, yeah, it's, it's, we, we know that we don't know it. That's exactly right. With regard to the DOT parking lot sites, and, and Mike is right, we did talk a lot about those during the charrette. That's some of the, the tallest buildings in the town center were allowed to be constructed in that site because of the difference in topography down from Hop Meadow. So it does have some, some attributes that I didn't get into in my memo here, but just in terms of processing time, there are no wetlands on the site. So really, that Conservation Commission, Wetlands Commission, would just simply have to decide if, if they needed a wetlands permit or not, and processing that would probably take a total of about 30 days. Zoning Commission Design Review Process would probably be about 90 days, if the application were conforming with the regulations that are in place. If a hearing were required to change a zone, it could be in excess of 120 days, but approximately, it would be about 120 days after the receipt of a set of plans and an application, complete application. And then the third site, of course, is the Eno site. Basically, what that comes down to is, there are no wetlands on the site, there obviously are some state historic preservation office requirements, historic structure, and treated very gently in that regard. There's no rezoning on that particular site with regard to current code. So out of the three sites, that would be the shortest in terms of processing time, again, based upon the, the acceptance of an, an application and plans, probably about 90 days to get through the local process. No floodplains, no wetlands.
Yeah, Nancy?
You had spoken to this, I think, at some point, and it's not in this particular memo recording process, but where this site is within the charrette and the town center code, if it were used for what it currently is zoned for, and it was a four-story building with mixed use, the net tax implication to a, not using that property as it's currently zoned and planned for?
I think, I did address that at the, at the last meeting we had, I think at Eno, when we talked about that. I think the assessor also did a calculation, somewhere between, a lost opportunity of somewhere between $800,000 and $1 million, somewhere, depending upon how it got developed.
Yeah. And one of the things that is on the site right now is a garage that goes up, and as you know, for most towns, it's very hard to get a private developer to build a garage, so that is often supplemented by town build there. One of the things that was discussed in public audience many weeks ago was, and Mr. Arcary could speak to that, if, because Hiram is exactly right, that it's one of the few spaces you can build vertically in town, because if you don't want to be above Eno. So you could do, and I turn this to you, Mr. Arcary, a senior center with some either business space above, or a housing space above. Could you speak to that?
Physically, that's not a bad idea. It's physically possible. The first floor of the facility could be a municipal senior center, which provides services to, let's say, elderly housing above, or mixed-market housing above, and, and businesses. It's technically feasible to do that, and would make some sense. You know, certainly from the perspective of a senior center, as a standalone project, it complicates it, because now you're talking about a joint venture and partnership with a private developer. And, it should be noted that while there would, you would still be capturing a fair portion of that potential tax revenue, you would, you know, really be displacing the potential tax revenue at the street level, which in this district is, you know, meant to be retail commercial. So, I do think it's, I do think it's possible, and, but it's, it's a pretty complicated process, and probably pushes the senior center project out, like, you know, without speculating a long time, until you can find a suitable partner.
Not to mention, wouldn't that complicate the parking issues that this site would potentially solve? Because we'd go from 100 for one facility, down to 100 for 50?
Yes, it would, and
25.
Realistically, it would have to be, you know, done in conjunction with a parking structure, which I believe is also included in the, in the downtown charrette.
Yes. Okay, that's helpful information. Other comments?
Oh, well, comments? I think, you know, as I look at the history of the, the building committee process, you know, they had a strong design statement that a independent building was important to maximize the, the value of the investment, and to kind of get to the critical threshold. And I think initially, as, as they had ranked, both the PAC center as well as the, the facility on Stratton Brook was most attractive to them. But for, for legitimate reasons, those began to kind of come off the table, when you looked at the concerns that were expressed about both. And, and quite honestly, I don't think when they really were looking seriously at the DOT site, that they were factoring in a lot, the value that it has relative to economic development. So I think that
Because that wa, and in fairness to the building committee, that was not their charge. They were looking to the best structure, right.
Right. Although they, they actually did factor in economic development
It was ranked, it was in the ranking.
As one of their criteria. The, you know, I, you know, I think we're going through the exact same conversations, basically, that, that the subcommittee went for several years. And I, I sensed at the last meeting, that there was some receptivity to, to trying to, to look creatively at all the sites. And I think in particular with the Board of Finance asking us to do a survey, I, I have some comfort with that, although I, I think it's quite possible that we're going to really come back to these two sites as the two most viable. And the only thing I want to
Which two sites?
The DOT site and Eno. And the only thing that I do want to say is, I do think that appropriate parking for a senior center is, to me, it's, it's actually a critical success factor. Because if you don't have critical parking, you're just not going to get the expanded amount of people coming down to use the facility, even if you build a bigger facility. It's almost like, you know, we could have the size of the library we have now, but if we don't have appropriate parking down there, we're not going to get the people and the use down there. And 100 was identified as, as kind of the, the critical level that was necessary to maximize the value for the dollar. If you do look at other sites, and, and you see these, you know, fairly new independent sites with plenty of parking, just visually, you realize right away how important that is in terms of access. So, I, I'm very receptive to embracing the concern about the DOT site, but what I, I don't want to do is for us to drift to Eno as the simple solution, because I'm going to propose that Eno actually doesn't meet a critical success factor. And, you know, secondarily, I don't think you get the value for the dollar invested with a renovation, as you do for an independent building. And, and my last concern that I'll express is, I do think you could, you could, you absolutely can put a senior center in Eno and do justice to that building, but it will change that building de facto from being a pure historic building to a, to a hybrid building. And my last point around that, I know a lot of people see as a downside to Eno, that if we create a separate site, now all of a sudden, we have two buildings, and we have to have maintenance for both of those buildings. But I actually look at that as, as a return on the value for an independent site, because it opens up the possibility to do some, you know, interesting and different things with Eno. So, I think we may end up right back to these two sites, but, but I personally like the idea of us continuing to explore. But a, a priority for me is that we don't easily settle on Eno, because it really becomes the easiest option. Because I do think there's a critical success factor that we'll never be satisfied doing it in Eno.
Hiram?
Just to, to address part of Mr. Kelly's comments, we talked about the survey, and we sort of, we sent out proposals for them. We should probably have them back by tomorrow, or Wednesday. The last time, and some of you may recall, in 2008, when we did the townwide survey, there was a lot of skepticism about how that would be done and the utility of it. You know, it was sort of right after the whole River Oaks thing, and there was a lot of skepticism in town about how the survey would be done, and how those questions would be phrased. We would like to update the survey, and for selectmen, I've been trying to do that for about three years.
Three years.
We think, at least I believe, I can't, I speak for anybody else, but I believe that doing the survey, and this, the groups that do this stuff are extremely sophisticated in terms of how they answer, ask questions, how they get to the issues, and what the answers are. We do think, and timeframes that they can complete these surveys are coming back very favorably, in terms of making, moving things forward. So we, again, we'll know by Wednesday what those exact timeframes and prices are. But there are two things that we wanted to put in the survey this time. In addition to updating what we did in 2008, we wanted to update the survey with regard to open space. That's an issue that we're talking about with some other commissions right now, and whether we should keep it all, whether some should be disposed of, very sensitive issue, we understand that. And then adding the senior community center issue in as well, was the other issue we wanted to add to it. So just wanted to say that we should have an answer to that, and how much that will cause in the very near future. I'm very optimistic that it'll be very helpful in terms of, of asking questions. I think it'll be more than just say, okay, we're back to these two sites. I think that the way the questions will be phrased will guide people, or whether they know it or not, if they say, we like this, we like this, we like this, okay, then your answer is the following. I think that's, that's how it'll, how it'll work. Very sophisticated stuff.
And we don't actually tell them what questions to ask. We say what information we're looking for, and it's a very objective. We actually don't have the ability to put questions on the survey, which we should not have, because if you want it to be an objective survey, you trust it to the professionals, you tell them
Just going to say, leave it to the experts.
Yeah. But one of the things I, for the public who may not be aware of what we're talking about, because I jumped the gun a little bit on this, at the last Board of Finance meeting, the, there was discussion among the board, and a consensus, although not a vote, that, and, is Joe here, Mancini? Is he still here?
Yes.
Okay. We'll get Joe in for that.
I think we got a memo from him on it.
We do have a memo from Joe on it. And one of, what they had consensus on is they felt they didn't have enough information, and wanted to see a formal survey. We do have some informal surveys. I'd like to thank Ed Lamontaine for his 2009 survey, you have that in your packets. Also, Mickey, through some of the senior volunteers, did an informal survey in 2013. And so we do have some indications, but as to Hiram's point, it wasn't done. Surveys are actually very complicated, and to do an objective survey, it really does take a professional. So those were not those surveys, although they did provide tremendously useful information. So we do have some. So one of the questions we're going to be asked tonight is to decide whether to do a survey. If we do a formal survey, here's the glitch, it takes time to do that survey.
That's my question, how long?
And it will delay, we would not be able to put a vote for the senior center on the May referendum, but there would be time to put it on a November referendum. And that is compatible with the budget process, the CIP, we've talked about, bond council, and town council, that this is perfectly acceptable way to do it. So, there would be time to do some of the exploration that you have mentioned you'd like to see further explored before we reach a decision, and that I think Sean has mentioned, he's interested in seeing, and to answer some of Mike's questions. There would be time if we do the survey, and the sense I got, although, and Joe, I'll let you speak to that, is that they were not inclined to vote favorably on some of the options unless they had this additional information. So they felt that it was crucial. Joe, would you like to speak to that at all?
Yeah, it would definitely be a fair assessment, that meeting, whether, whether you're right to actually formally request you to have a survey.
It's not.
You guys can decide.
They can pay, they can pay for it, but
I will tell you before that we're in attendance, absolutely supported the effort, and advised strongly to do it.
But to Sean's point, it's actually, it's our decision, policymakers, to make that call. As the chief administrative officer of the town, they cannot do the survey, only me through my staff can do that. So, and I would only do that, of course, with the support of this board, if you're interested in doing that. But if we are interested in doing that, I absolutely support Hiram in their question. If we're going to do a survey on the senior, we might as well.
I'll get the most out of it, yeah.
Yes, Sean?
Can I just jump in and make a couple of comments? So, Chris, I, I agree with you that, you know, we keep, we keep coming kind of back to Eno, and I, I don't want to just default to it as an, as an easy answer. And there, there isn't an easy answer here, obviously, as we've been talking about it for so many years. And I think actually making it more complicated, I think, is actually going to be a better decision here, as we, as we look at additional sites. But one thing that keeps coming back to me through all this, and we heard it from Ed Lamontaine and some other folks during the, the public hearings that we've had, is Eno is simply not an acceptable building right now, from an ADA compliance standpoint, for, for our, our users. We have town meetings there, we have events there. Whether we use it as, as a senior center or not, that, that obligation doesn't go away. And in fact, we find our businesses, when they're not in compliance with it, yet, you know, we get to play by a little bit different set of rules here. And I, I think we have an obligation to, to make that building ADA compliant, regardless of what we do with it, which is why I, I continue to consider Eno to be part of this solution no matter what, because we're going to have to make a significant investment in that building, whether you use it, whether we use it for one activity, or 1,000 activities. And the community's going to, going to have to, to step up to the plate, and I think they'll be willing to step up to the plate and, and do something about that. Which is why I, I have been harping on the distributed model since I've gotten on this board, and why I think that if you partner that with the PAC site, quite honestly, I think that lends itself to, to a far better potential outcome, because you're not removing economic development, and economic development dollars from, you know, potential grand lists by using a DOT site. And you're leaving Eno in the equation, which I think has to be in the equation, and some scale, whether it's 5%, 50%, or 95%. I think Eno needs to be part of this. You know, there, there's lots of things that we can do with it. We can put the hub there, we can have a, you know, historical society there, with some scaled-down senior center services. We could have more robust, you know, program there. There's, I think, flexibility. You know, I, I'm, I understand that there's potential challenges with the PAC site, but, you know, I, I think it takes a little bit of vision and creativity to get hard stuff like this done. You know, that, that PAC site was nothing when I was a kid, and now look at it, and that, you know, that was a hell of a lot of vision and forward thinking, and a lot of convincing to even get where we are today. So I, I think that's, I think that's what this board needs to consider as well, you know, and, and I think the DOT site, for me, is, is quite honestly a non-starter, because I, I think the cost from an economic development loss outweighs at the benefit at this point, knowing that we have to do something with Eno. So, that's, that's kind of where I come down.
And, yeah, I mean, a lot of this is a bit of repeated comments, as we've been through, as you mentioned, 30 some odd meetings on this particular topic, but I said from the beginning, I think Eno deserves to be renovated, and has to be made. We're sitting in, about to look at our operating budget, and one of the line items is, you know, money towards renovations to Eno, because we keep kind of band-aiding that building, and And so, you know, pieces of caution tape and cones are up there, and people can't access that building. So safety and ADA compliance, and, you know, I think moving forward with some sort of a shared model is going to make this a win for so many aspects of what makes our town great. So if it can fulfill allowing a site to produce good economic development, and if it can fulfill our taking care of our historic treasures, and, you know, keeping that community use of that building that has made it such a great place and is such a great town. And then I think taking the PAC site to the next level where it's wanted to be for quite some time, and we've had such success with the vision that has already been there. And it isn't, as Sean said, none of this is easy. Certainly, there isn't any settling that would ever be made with this decision. It's a lot of money, and there's a lot of options to this. One of the comments I also wanted to make is, you know, we did spend, speaking of money, a lot of money and a lot of time on the charrette, and it was to set a vision for our town. And I think if we make an exception to what that vision is with the very first thing that we would do there, then that sets the wrong tone for what we created for a vision for our downtown. So we spent all that time trying to convince people of what we wanted, and now we're going to be the first people to tell ourselves that we didn't know what we were talking about. And I just think that's so counter to what we did throughout that entire process. So I also don't want folks to walk away with the fact that if we do a survey, we're looking to delay this. It's not to delay it. It's that, you know, each step of the way, we've been presented with things we think that could be a better solution to this. And I think it's worth the time to look into that. And it's not because the Board of Finance told us to. It's, I mean, ultimately, they have the decision to approve this $8.3 million.
They do have the power of the purse, and that's a realistic...
So we could say no now, and they can say no later to us. And then when you talk about delay, there's no more bigger delay than that. So I just appreciate the hours and hours of work by staff, by the public giving comment, and by this board who has had countless conversations about it. But I could not support the DOT site for a lot of reasons that I've said leading up to this.
Other comments, Cheryl.
Yeah. I feel very strongly that we can't leave Eno in the state that it's in. Whether we go to the PAC site or another site, it is not fair to the citizens of this town to make people walk under ice dams and falling icicles and uneven sidewalks and literally bricks falling off the building. And if we move the senior center away from there, which is still a possibility, we still have to fix it, because it is a treasure to this town, and we abandoned it to time and deterioration. And I feel like that part of my problem with the DOT site is that, you know, removing is exactly what Nancy said, you know, to take that out of the equation for our town economic development is not right. You know, we have a vision, and we should stick to it, and I just don't, can't imagine removing such a large swath of land with so many unknowns with regard to the purchase, with regard to the condition of the property. There's a lot of things we don't know about that. I'm not saying Eno would be easy. I don't think it's an easy fallback position, because I think it's going to take a lot of work to make Eno workable. But it's going to take that work whether the senior center is there or not, because if we are going to use it for other town functions, we still have to fix it. We cannot make people walk in and out of that building in the condition that it's in. It's not right. It's not accessible. So that's sort of where I am with that. I have mixed feelings about the survey. As you said, we've had 34 hearings.
Do you feel like it's a survey you on the survey?
We have had ample opportunity for the public to comment on this. We've had, what, 37 hearings?
38.
38. We have had, you know, we have had, I don't know how many times, you know, between aging and disability and the senior center and everybody else who's had an opportunity to comment on this, you know, maybe the Board of Finance hasn't participated in any of that, but they should have. And I think that, you know, if they need more information on what's going on with the senior center, they could come to any one of those meetings and find out.
Tell us what you really think, Cheryl.
Well, part of my...
Board of Finance is calling.
I know. The other problem with that is the delay. And I feel strongly that we need to move ahead with this. And if it's going to delay us, I'm not particularly in favor of that right now, given all of the time and effort put in by all of the citizens and staff and everybody else has put into this. I just think the time for stalling is okay. It's, you know, everybody has had a chance to comment. You know, if the rest of you feel that, you know, we absolutely have to have a survey, then, you know, that's good. But, you know, we've had a lot of surveys in this town. The Board of Ed does surveys, you know, or, you know, we've had health surveys, we've had activity surveys, we've had all sorts of surveys.
It's absolutely rational position. Just to Nancy's point, if we don't do a survey, they may vote it down, and then the delay is much longer. So that's just, you deal with the practical.
Please, can I suggest something, though? That I don't think the survey necessarily causes us to slow down. I envision we give direction tonight, if the board is willing, on a site, or on sites or on a path, and I think that triggers, finally, everything else. And I think the survey can supplement that, quite honestly, to give the Board of Finance and anyone else comfort, including ourselves, not only on that decision, but on the programming, the scope, as we're about to spend a lot of money on architectural designs if we pick a site. I'd like to know better about what people, you know, want additionally. I know you folks did a lot of work on that through the process, but I think it's important to continue to refine that scope, because things change. We've been doing this for a long time. People's opinions change, the demographics of the town change, you know, people come and go. So I don't envision waiting for the results of the survey to pick a site. I envision using the survey to further support the programming, the decisions, the cost overall as we march toward the November referendum, quite honestly, which folks may need some understanding and some time for, but it's a different date, but it's the exact same process that we follow with every other capital plan. Everybody's going to get the same crack at it from a voting standpoint that they would normally. And quite honestly, from a turnout, I think I said this before, you get 8% turnout at a budget referendum, you're going to get 50 to 65% turnout at a municipal election, which, quite honestly, I would much rather have 65% of this town voting on a project this massive. You know, I think that's really important. So I think the November timeframe is really a great idea, and I commend you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
I don't disagree with you on the timeframe, Sean, but with all due respect, we have had, our professionals at the senior center have evaluated the needs and the wants, and again, and again, the needs and the wants, and...
All right. You can take me out in the parking lot and beat me up later.
Okay, let's go to Chris.
I don't feel we need a survey, and many times I would say I don't feel it's really appropriate at this point. But I will echo Sean's point. There is not a single person here who has articulated that there is a place that is the perfect place for us to do this. And this, for me, is a, I don't want to say rare time, but certainly a small minority time, where I actually think we potentially have a better decision if we give it more time and we continue to search for a better solution. So with that said, a survey does always add value, Lisa, to your point. If it's done well, you're always going to get insights that are worthwhile. To Sean's point, I don't think doing a survey concurrent with the continued work otherwise really gets in the way of our process. And the only other thing I'll throw out there is I do feel that, on this subject, the community has been relatively quiet, and not, the general community has not yet fully engaged this issue. And part of the value of the survey, I believe, and part of the values of continuing to look for options, and also part of the value of it being during a larger vote, is I think it will help the community engage this more, because although this has been going on for multiple years, quite honestly, it's only been at the Board of Selectmen that we've actively been discussing this at this level of depth for several months. So I think this is a rare time where I'm actually comfortable proceeding, looking at other options, and adding the survey to the process.
One of the things I thought about in proposing the November date is, you know, in businesses, the average business life is about 10 years, and so things move very fast. And, you know, you get things done quickly and decisions are made quickly. When we do things at the municipal level, whatever we build is going to be here 100 years. And so a five-month time to reflect is, if you look at the time span that we're going to be completing, I'm okay with that. I think Sean and Chris both made excellent points. I mean, Eno is going to have to have something done with it. The parking at Eno is a huge, huge problem. So if that can't be one of the things, the other, if, and I'm getting the sense from this board that the state lot site will not arrive tonight if we take a vote on it. But if that's the case, I think we do need to look at the Performing Arts Center site as one, an alternative entirely. Could we do it all in that area? Or in part? So knowing that we have to do something with Eno, we absolutely do. We don't have to do something with Eno tomorrow, but we have to do something with it over time, and we need to plan for it. And if there are options that we could do, Mickey did a wonderful job coming up with a condensed programming at Eno at a reduced cost, I think, for $6,500. Do I have that, Jeff? If you do that. But we do know that there are times during the year where there are big events there that cannot be accommodated at Eno for parking. Could you do the big event section in coordination with the Performing Arts Center site and accommodate some of the needs of the Performing Arts Center at the same time for those separate big events? I don't know. Or could you do the whole senior center at the Performing Arts Center site, and then you could renovate Eno at a later time for the hub or the other exciting opportunities that might be there? So the bottom line is, and we haven't, we have some members of the Performing Arts Center here, and although we've had some initial discussions, and we do have letters that they are interested in pursuing this, I'll call it a synergy. What you have, the potential with the Performing Arts Center site is, we already have a municipal building there. With the Eno, we already have a municipal building. With the state lot site, it would be something new. There are advantages and disadvantages to all three. So how are we best utilizing the spaces we have, and how are we meeting the needs over time? I would be okay at looking at those conversations over the next few months. I did talk to Hiram and Jeff, and they thought we could do at least, and with our architect, a quick study and get to a resolution fairly quickly. One of the things at the Performing Arts Center site, the flood zone map changed, and we would need to do a, what do you call it, a wetlands flagging? What do you call that?
Wetlands flagging.
Yeah, so there would, which is expensive. And so those are things that could be done in the process. The reason why I hesitate on Eno goes to what Mr. Zaler said and what Chris said. I mean, kind of crazy to build a senior center that nobody can get to. So we would have to further explore, although Hiram has come up with some suggestions about how he could improve the parking and utilize that site, but we haven't been fully explored. So there are those options there. We have tonight a couple of options we could do. We could take off the state lot site or vote on it, and maybe it wins. We could vote it down, or we could say, look, well, if we're going to do the survey, and if we're going to go to the November referendum, which I think does make sense, because you get more of the public's input on that, for that alone, it makes sense to me. Then we could have time to explore, is there a combination with the Performing Arts Center and some other site? Should we do it all at the Performing Arts Center? Is there potential to resolve the parking situation at Eno? Mr. Archery, do you think we've exhausted the parking capacity at Eno? Is that just never going to happen, or are there other things we could do?
Well, I think we've demonstrated there are options to meet the parking requirements at Eno via either partnership with the adjacent property and redevelopment, or through the construction of tiered parking structure. So physically, it could be accommodated, but the reality is, and this is a fair statement, is that the Eno site proper is relatively landlocked. So you're only going to get so many parking spaces on that site.
And one of the things I will say, when the studies, the subcommittee, they did not like the idea of a distributed model. They were vehemently against that. So that is an obstacle.
There are some real challenges to the distributed model as your sort of senior center design professional, and that is that the senior center still needs to operate as a unified facility. It is more than just, more than just a, hey, we're going to go here for a program, there for a program. It's a gathering place, it's a socialization center. And 95% of the programs really want to be, you know, in one place on a daily basis. However, in terms of the distributed model, I do think it's viable that you could build a large multifunction space with a kitchen, let's say, at another site like the PAC, that would handle large events. It could be subdivided for other community meeting events and could meet a lot of, you know, regular community goals. At the same point, that facility could have shared or overlap space that would meet the Performing Arts Center's needs. So yes, I do think that that one program element, the sort of the large event capacity, could be met at PAC.
And you could still do your, the programming recommendation you came up with for the $6.5 million. Mickey viewed that as a complete senior center. Did you not?
Sure. At the Eno Hall, there are some compromises in that because of the fact that Eno is tight, and some of the programming solutions are dependent on what happens with SCTV. If SCTV can be relocated, then it's easier to make the scheme work, but those are really technicalities we could deal with later.
And your plans do envision, or do they not, the cost of relocating SCTV?
Some of the schemes did, relocating them within the facility. We have no plan for off-site relocation. We have a real solution on something that could be explored down the road. The only thing I would caution is that the preliminary studies indicate that, and it's relatively common sense, that a distributed model requires construction of two projects. So the overall price tag, you know, relatively, where you're talking 10 versus 8.
You just can't split it.
You're not, you know, altogether, you're not talking about a less expensive project.
Jeff, you did, and just an initial estimate, if we did sort of a distributed model, can you talk to us about some, and they're very preliminary numbers, they could change over time. Jeff and them will go, oh, because it was...
These are in the memo, I think, that you have, and we threw it together, but worked hard on it. Only over the weekend, frankly, and today, we have to work on it. There is some costs in there for two pieces, one being the facility that Tom talked about, Performing Arts Center, which would be 8,100 square feet with a full kitchen, bathrooms, musical storage, the types of things that both the senior center and the PAC would need for music programs down there, along with, you know, the full multi-purpose room, you know, subdivisible into two or three spaces. That would be at a cost of...
3.8?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On top of the $6.5, so that comes out to about 9.
Right. It's actually...
Minus the $1 million that Bob Henley's raising.
Actually, 3.79.
Yeah, 3.79.
Minus the $1 million that Bob Henley's raising.
Thank you, Bob.
On top of that, again, you'd have, as Tom said, the reduced program at the Eno, which would not include things like the multi-purpose room. I mean, the multi-purpose room that's there now would remain in that plan if SCT remained in the space that they're in. If they moved, that space could be expanded to a larger multi-purpose room, but probably not as large as we were originally going to envision. So the cost of that would be $5.88 million. So together, the cost would be about $9.67 million for both sites.
But that could be phased in over time. I mean, you wouldn't build, you could build one site and then the other site.
You could.
In terms of capital improvement planning. We did have, we do have a plan for the Performing Arts Center, several phases that we haven't, oops, sorry about that, over time. So that's one possibility, but you're right, it's very expensive to do that. We did have initial conversations with the Performing Arts Center board, and I see two members there. Before I go to them, I know Nancy had a question for the architect.
It was just around the comments about SCTV. When you had laid out the floor plan and where SCTV would be, are there actually windows for them, or is it a big black box? So I'm appreciative of their feedback at this point, having already have... So I'm appreciative of their feedback at this point, having already, having looked at that plan a couple of weeks back.
The preliminary scheme that we have right now has them generally in a lower level. So there's limited exposure.
No windows.
Or limited exposure, so one window. Don't hold me to that.
It's really, really big.
It's kind of a small spotlight on the wall.
Definition big.
But their program needs are unique too and frankly are also challenging because you need administrative and office space, which wants to be very bright and airy, but you also need this sort of black box space, but you also need sort of this loading capacity. You want the ability to get equipment in and out. So they really need a diverse program, which I don't know if it can be truly be accommodated at Eno either way, either now or in the future.
Can we explore another site for SCTV as part of our...
We have had initial conversations with the Board of Education. They are currently exploring site uses, but yes, it's a possibility. It is hard. I think over the years, we've thought about that many times. If we can come up with something, obviously that's a wonderful solution. There's costs, I think anywhere between $200,000 and $400,000 to move them and renovate. Is that about right, Jeff?
Probably more.
All right. So we'd have to look into those costs.
But I think, can we do that as part of all this? I mean, we are talking about physically the space that they're in and providing one option at this point that doesn't seem to meet the needs they're talking about. So where they are in the building, having, I mean, the way that we've reached back out to the PAC, can we reach back out to the Board of Ed and really nail that down as well?
Of course. And I actually did have a conversation with them a few weeks ago, but we can, we can call up with that as well. So, Tom?
Just the last piece to really pile on.
Excellent.
The pushing the decision to November still keeps, the timeline is still, the timeline is still very, very tight. A lot of decisions have to be made in the, by August. So I just want the guys to bear that in mind in terms of the amount of time you'll have to explore.
Yeah, you do have in your memos the timeline. You do have to give 16 days notice. So that means all approval's done by August. So we've gone through us, all the land use boards, all the Board of Finance. So that's a lot of places to get through to get to decision point. Hiram did feel it was doable, although it's tricky. Hiram?
It's tricky. There's no question that it would take a significant amount of perseverance. Typically, the land use boards don't meet in August. I think that they'd be more than happy to, or at least willing to, meet during the August. One thing I just wanted to leave you with that addresses, I think, points that Sean made and Chris made. No matter what you do, we still have a parking issue in the area of Eno.
Yeah.
Regardless of what you do here.
You're right.
And that's a situation that I've been looking at and thinking about for a long time. So regardless of where you go with this, we still have to deal with that.
Yep.
We might plug that into your thinking in terms of how we, and I think, I think frankly, the survey will have some component to it, which will help people think about how we deal with that. Because that's such an incredibly central location of the town and so important, whatever we do there, we need to number one, hide it, need to make, look it really good, and we need to make sure that it functions really well for all the businesses that are in that area, one of the most concentrated areas of businesses in town center. So just wanted to leave you with that, as if you didn't have enough to think about. We're left with that no matter what you do.
Pile it up.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Chris?
Just, hey, Hiram, one more question. Is every option we're looking at right now still going to have the road be a converted to a two-way road?
That's a thinking. We need to obviously work with the police, but that's a thinking, yes.
Okay. Because that impacts parking for those businesses right there, yeah.
Absolutely. So we lose, you know, half a dozen, 12, 16 spaces right away, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep you there for another second, but has there been any other reconfiguration of the streets around there considered, you know, either, you know, maybe closing off part of the street, the two-way issue, you know?
Two-way streets, really, when you start talking about economic development, two-way streets are really a good thing. One-way streets, businesses on them tend to suffer a bit. If it's at all difficult for people to get to them, where they can't park close enough, where they can't go down the street the right way, or you can't get your coffee by driving only right in the morning, you know, you're gonna go into the spot that's easiest for you.
I was actually thinking about over the road, you know, the road where the true value is and that other area.
There've been lots of discussions about various opportunities, not ready to share lots of those at a public meeting yet, but we certainly always anticipated trying to make that into a two-way street for the betterment of that whole area.
Just to keep my line on backwards, we already have a half a million approved for streetscape improvements for that area, right? Which conceivably can be used for constructing the two-way and making those improvements?
That was my initial understanding.
I believe so. I think it's something less than that.
It's close to a half mil, because we approved it years ago in the budget process when we took the parking garage off the table. And I think I heard the other night that we were considering using it a little bit further south towards the free library, but the intent, I believe at the time, was to use it around the Eno site specifically for some of these, some of these issues.
Yeah, it was supposed to be the matching money for the grant, which was to include the parking deck, streetscape improvements around there. And it was over, it was at least not a half million, a little bit over, because we were talking about, would it be enough to just do the streetscape? And so we realized that peeling the parking part out of it would still allow for the streetscape to move forward, is my recollection.
We'll try and get that number for you from Joe.
That's more insular to that whole discussion if we're doing that, because I think it is worthwhile to continue to pursue the two-way, one-way or another here.
Yeah. Mike?
I have nothing for Hiram.
But don't leave.
Somebody else will. But a couple of thoughts. Eno, regardless of what we do, I agree with Sean, we need to do something for the lady. She deserves it and we have to make it right.
If there is any way we could possibly do this survey and get it to the Maytime frame, it sounds like it's not. And I'm just double checking to make sure. If we can't, we can't. But we absolutely have to have it in place for November. And I'll probably get in trouble at home, but if it means having an additional meeting to come here to do something, I will do that. We owe this to these folks to try to get this decided as soon as we can.
Yes, I agree with you and I appreciate your willingness. And also I appreciate, you know, as we try and do this right, it is a painful, long process, but like I said, whatever we do, when we pick the site, we're gonna do it spectacularly and it's gonna be here for 100 years.
For gluttons for punishment.
Yes, but I think, you know, we do wanna make sure that we've explored all the options. I think Hiram is right. A survey, some of the surveys we've done well have added values. A professional survey adds actually quite a bit more value there because of the way they do it and the way it's structured. I don't know if you have had a chance to look at the 2008 survey. You'll see that it's a little different than some of the surveys that we just do on, you know, Survey Monkey or something like that. It's a different animal, which is why they are expensive. It would be anywhere from $15,000 to probably $25,000 in terms of...
You're paying for good science. I mean, there's a, you talk about the structures of the questions and everything. There's very good professional people that do that so that we get good information.
And Hiram is exactly right. He doesn't get to ask the questions that go on the survey. I don't get to ask the questions that go on the survey. This board will give them direction in terms of what we're looking for, in terms of information, and they formulate the questions in a way so that it's not biased by any of us. So, Hiram, do you wanna add to that or did I summarize that okay?
I think that's right. And frankly, we've used the 2008 survey for many years after, it's served as a really good template for a lot of other things that we've done. So whether it's open space or whether it's this particular ratio or others, I think it has value. And so I still think, I feel comfortable with that November date from my point of view and from a processing, land use processing standpoint, I think it fits really well.
And if you read Hiram's memo, he did a great job analyzing the process, because like I said at the very beginning, we can make a decision, but it's not our final decision. There are other elected boards that will have a look at this as well. So it's part of a long process. What we do tonight is not the end of the process, it's really the beginning of the process. What we, yeah.
Just say that if we do the survey, and I'm not, you know, dead set against it, but it's really only as good as the quality of the responses. And we, as a board and our boards and commissions, are going to have to convince people to answer the survey because, you know...
Well, they actually do it by phone calls. You wanna speak to that?
Well, I know, but a lot of people don't answer their phone. So we're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have to really publicize the fact that we want people to answer.
Yeah, we did last time, we had a few calls from people that were surprised that they got called.
Yeah.
But the numbers are all selected by computer. They're all statistically defensible once they get the results. They make concerted efforts to call the selected people a number of times, at least three times. And they say, if it's not convenient for you to talk to us now, when can you spend 15 or 20 minutes with us? And we'll call you back and so on. So very impressed with how it came out last time and only can hope that it'll be as good and even better this time.
My only point is that, you know, for all of us, we have to encourage, you know, if we're gonna go to all the trouble and the expense, we need to really...
The only, and the other thing I would say too is that you will get people, overall people, that are residents of town and voters and taxpayers, not necessarily focused in a particular interest group. So once it gets approved in terms of moving forward, it should have a good solid base, whatever it is that's decided. And if the decision is not to do anything, then you'll know that going in. So if the decision is to put it in a particular location or do it a particular way, you'll know that in going in as well. So it's additional information that hopefully will help you make the best decision for the town long-term.
Chris?
Hiram, I know you're trying to sneak away. Didn't come from me.
Shy, Chris. What do you see as the current prospects or energy around the DOT site within the next five years actually having, you know, one of the economic development solutions that we're looking for?
I certainly can't tell you that I've had anybody come through the door with a set of plans in my hand, but I've had three calls in the last six months inquiring about the site. The first thing that they wanna know, because they're serious developers, is what are the environmental aspects of the site? And I say, we don't know and we can't tell you because the state won't let us test it. If we were to try to figure out, number one, if there were people interested or not, what I've suggested to the first select committee before is that we put together a letter, a proposal, letters of interest, soliciting letters of interest. We haven't done that yet, but we certainly could do that. And we could do that very quickly, we could do that tomorrow frankly if you wanted to do that. I suspect that within a week or two, we would get letters of interest back from a number of people and could make some determinations then. I think there are ways to address questions about the environmental aspects of the site, at least around the site.
Absolutely.
Not testing on the site, because we just can't do that. So we may be able to answer a good deal of those questions. But I do think that there's certainly a good possibility that we would have some interest. There have been a lot of people that expressed interest, some substantial people, some developers that have the wherewithal to do a project. As I've always said, we shouldn't really own it for very long, about 30 minutes would be my hint.
Well, that was the plan, that was actually the plan.
We are the go-between, yes.
One of the things we did confirm with council, because this is, as you can imagine, it came up during the discussions and when we met with the state DOT, is how long do we have this offer on the table? And it's in perpetuity. So there is not a rush if we decide not to use the DOT site. We can get, Hiram can, because if we go this other route, he's gonna be working pretty hard through August, as is town staff. So we could do this in September, I mean, we can do this at any time. So that option is out there and will stay out there. We don't lose, it's not use it or lose it at this point, which is, we're fortunate to be in that situation. So yes, Sean?
So I know we have a motion and a second on the table.
We do.
We need to figure out what to do with that, but I'll be honest with you, after we resolve that, I'm gonna put another one on the table, because I think we need to, we need to give some directionality to this.
Absolutely.
And while we may not pick the site in its finality tonight, I think we need to give town staff and the residents of this town some substantial direction in terms of where we're going. Because I envision we're gonna keep doing this if we don't have that vote tonight.
100% agree. And I do wanna say even before we take the vote, I do not expect our decisions to be unanimous in this process, but once we reach the final decision, they will be unanimous in the support from this board in making it the best possible project we can make it for the citizens of this community. And we look forward to reaching out to our citizens, whatever site we pick. And we ask you to work with us, even if it's not your first choice or your second choice or even your third choice, to make it as wonderful and meet the needs of our seniors in the best possible way we can. And so that's where we are in that. We do have a motion on the table. Is there any further, oh, I wanted to give, the Performing Arts Center Board is here as well. Did you have any comments at this point?
I know where SCTV should go. That's a positive, I don't mean...
No. She didn't laugh at the law.
Nothing less a positive from him.
Bob?
I guess, first of all, I wanna, I remember sitting up there, although not in quite as lavish a corner.
Oh, stop. Just stopped.
Very snappy what you have done.
You have to give credit to Miss Glassman on that one.
Recognizing this is only the second thing on your agenda and it's after nine o'clock. I mean, I think we're very fortunate in our town to have such dedicated, nice people to do our bidding for us. So I wanna just say that. The other is, two things about the Performing Arts Center. The first is about the Performing Arts Center, actually about the community center. So I trust that there is, and I'm gonna check it, because Jeff said there is something on the website that the architects have done about this, about what it is that the community would want, those that are experienced in the community, seniors, as you call them. So what those kinds, what the kinds of services and things those people 10 and 15 years from now are gonna want? Are they the same? I mean, I know what my parents did when they were my age today, and it isn't what I do today. So I'm assuming that we've taken that into consideration as we think about how we build, whatever we build, wherever we build it.
Absolutely. We have to do best practices.
Right. So the other, and that's just a comment, then the other is that I was involved in the initial construction and fundraising for the Performing Arts Center as it is today and am certainly a committed member of the Performing Arts Center Board and Committee and really think it's a great engine for the community economically in the future. And I think it's unfortunate that we have a facility that's kinda not done. And that performers come in here or events come in here and we have to have it graded and it's muddy, I mean, it's a mess down there. And there's not facilities on the back of what is acoustically an incredibly high-quality facility. And all of us have been there, so I don't wanna beat that up. But as we look at what the community needs for a community center and senior center, I would hope that we would think creatively and how we can tie that in some way and make it part of the things that we offer to the community through our community center, whether it's split through Eno, and I agree with the comments that were made about Eno, whether it's split somehow or whatever, but that in the end, when we spend eight or 10, I mean, you know, it's like Warren Buffett says, you know, a billion here, a billion there, pretty soon you've got a lot of money. I mean, eight million, it's nine million. I mean, if we're gonna bond eight, let's bond nine and do it right. And, but we should try to make sure...
I think I'm getting you a cookie.
No, I'm just saying, I pay taxes here, eight million, nine million. So I just hope that we'll take that into consideration.
No, I agree completely. And one of the things, one of the next steps would be if we continue to keep the possibility of the Performing Arts Center as either a full site consideration or some partial site, we would look at compatible use. And that would have to have substantial discussions with our senior center and the Performing Arts Center to make sure that there is a compatible use path to going forward in terms of that. You know, with the dog parks, the neighborhoods, there would, absolutely, and that has not happened and would absolutely need to happen. I talked about this with Jeff and Hiram and they would help with that conversation if that's where this board wants to go. But you're exactly right. It does have to, there's no more islands anymore. There's no, schools aren't just for the kids. We have senior events there, we use it for the community. Senior center is for the seniors, we gotta meet their needs, but you know, at night, the community uses it. I think the Performing Arts Center is not just for the Performing Arts Center, it needs to also be for the community. So we can't afford islands anymore, we gotta look for synergies and compatible uses and I think that's very exciting. There's a lot of potential, actually, there's a lot of potential in all three sites. I don't feel like there was any bad site, but I also don't feel like there's any perfect site.
Agreed.
So that's where I am now. We do have a couple of things we can do. We do have a motion and a second on the table. We can vote on the motion as it exists. We can withdraw the motion and continue down the path if we withdraw the motion. I think Sean is prepared to make a separate motion in terms of direction that we should I think Sean is prepared to make a separate motion in terms of direction that we should give staff to explore. So, that's where we are. I think, Chris, you made the motion.
I would suggest, I would move to withdraw the motion.
And I seconded it, I would do that.
Okay. So, we no longer have the motion on the table.
So, with that, I move that we consider the Performing Arts Center as our primary solution to the senior center in partnership with the Performing Arts Board at this point, additionally, looking at shared service with the Eno Memorial Facility, yeah, in conjunction with that project.
Could you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
PAC is primary site, is what I've moved for.
PAC is the primary site.
Partnership with the PAC Board, and then obviously continuing the path of exploration of ADA compliance at Eno as well.
So, the full site there, if that doesn't work, would you be amenable to looking for a partial and an Eno combination as part of this deliberation?
Essentially what I'm saying, so yes, I'll take that as a friendly.
So, maybe not primary, or friendly, okay.
Primary solution.
Primary solution.
More than 50% is where I'm going with that.
We can have, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so we are now, can I have a discussion on that?
I just want to clarify that you mean ADA compliance at Eno?
Yeah.
No matter what?
I said it before, yes. I mean, we need to address that, but at this point, we're not voting on the funds this evening.
Right, no, I know.
So, I don't know what that costs. But I think we need to direct town staff, one, on a primary site, and two, to not abandon the ADA compliance issue at Eno, is the point of my motion.
Thank you.
Is that fair?
Absolutely. And I think that, Jeff, within the getting to November, we could have at least some preliminary evaluations on that, correct?
Yes. We're gonna give you the consulting budget.
I was gonna say, can we release that $240,000 now?
Again, I just don't know on the land use, basically ADA accessibility might trigger our land use process too.
Absolutely. I mean, we know that every site is gonna involve land use review, and some sites may involve, you know, other state agencies and even federal agency reviews. So, those are known obstacles, they're not barriers at this point. I think, to Sean's point, as the state lot site is off, the motion is off, what the Performing Arts Center site does enable us to do is look at an alternative site for a full Performing Arts Center, I mean, a full senior center, in one location on one level. And also explore Eno in terms of whether that's a separate project or in conjunction with this. But whatever we do, we have to fix Eno at some point. It has to be on our capital improvement plan.
And that's the intent, is it's easy to get sidetracked, as we've seen with this entire project, and I don't want that to happen, because the ADA compliance issues at Eno exist today, they'll exist tomorrow, they're gonna exist in five years, we have to make sure that we address that. And I don't want this good project to derail that. I know that's a lot of work, but again, I just...
And one thing that may come out of this, if this board does vote for it, is that we may get to a point, yes, we've explored it, and the wetlands preclude it. And so, it may become a barrier in which place it'll come back to us. But I agree that it's worth exploring, because...
You gotta go somewhere.
And I think that it, we do know from the Building Committee that they preferred a new site location over renovating Eno, this does accommodate that.
Keeps it downtown.
Keeps it downtown, and it uses an existing structure that's already there. We do have the letter from Don Rieger, who's on both conservation and open space, who highlighted that there may be potential barriers down the line, but those are not barriers yet, we have not taken that off the table. So, knowing that if we go in that direction, there may be barriers that preclude us from going forward, and we may have to come back here and do it again, we could do that.
I think, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I think that those two sites together, again, I think what we can't get out of one, we can get out of the other. And so, if we can't get the full site out of the PAC, and we come across some things that create some barriers, we have, you know, that, some capacity at Eno that can, so